The Governor of Lagos State, able to be represented by the Secretary to the Government, the Excellency, the Secretary to the Federal Government, able to be represented by the Minister of State for Education. Our Royal Fathers, good morning. I am representing the Director General of NCDC and may I humbly stand on the existing protocol to read a speech. Uh, well, he is actually unavoidably absent. So, I'll read his speech. I'm grateful for this occasion and the presence of our Governors, the Secretary to the Government, our Ministers, our Royal Fathers. Thank you for the role which you play individually. Thank you for your determination and consistency. All hands have been on deck to make our response worthwhile and more effective. Nice Nigerians, I celebrate how far we have come and the strikes we have made in reducing the spread of coronavirus. Unlike was predicted, I think WHO said it, we have not had the worst, we have not seen the worst as was, as, as, as been in other countries. However, we want to encourage us to not to let our response win. Globally, we have confirmed over one eighty-eight million confirmed COVID globally and four million deaths. In Nigeria, we have confirmed over one hundred and sixty-eight thousand cases and over two thousand deaths. Being the Director of Surveillance, actually as myself, I won't call it a privilege because I do not like seeing those numbers, but I see the numbers every day and when I see deaths recorded, I'm always sad. But we have not done so badly because our death rate is not as high as has been predicted. But we want to continue, I want to really appreciate the health workers, the laboratory services, those that are in the laboratory space, they have worked tirelessly since we have recorded our first COVID case. The surveillance officers on the field looking for these cases, we really want to appreciate you. We also want to appreciate our communication officers. Yes, our Royal Father said they have not done enough, we need to do more so that people can understand what COVID is all about and as we are here, the vaccination. I also want to appreciate our doctors and nurses that are directly in contact with these patients at the treatment centers. We really need to appreciate ourselves. In recent weeks, the African countries have actually experienced rises in COVID-19 cases, particularly South Africa, and they have introduced restrictions due to the surge. We wouldn't want that to happen in Nigeria. Now more than ever, we need to ensure that we do not slack in our response. We must come to value availability, the availability of the vaccine. With it, we have an added advantage, an additional critical tool which, to included, which included with all the other established public health measures that we have put in place. The vaccine is a game changer. One of the reasons why we enjoy life expectancy than, than in other decades past is because of vaccines. It is now less common to battle diseases of old, which are common illnesses not to take early lives. I'm sure most of us will testify that in our, at our young age, we were all vaccinated with some common, against some common diseases like tuberculosis, measles, diphtheria, polio. All these are vaccine preventable. So I would like to remind you that these vaccines, which some of us had had the privilege of receiving at our early ages and which have provided the necessary immunity to the diseases mentioned. Misinformation in the social media continues to spread and while it is understandable to question the speed with which the COVID-19 vaccine were manufactured, it is also worth celebrating. It is a reflection of the advancement which we have made and it is an indication of the capacity we have and the potential for better medical advances. COVID-19 has stopped the world in such an unprecedented way and there is much to be built back from the many disruptions the pandemic has caused. In the build to build back, I encourage us here to please and please adhere to the non-pharmaceutical interventions that we have in place. Let us wear a mask and wear it properly, covering our nose and mouth. Wash our hands regularly, use the alcohol-based sanitizer, let us keep this physical distance, very important, and in all this, let us get vaccinated. Today, we want to encourage all to make the most of this town hall meeting. Let's listen to the figures that we are going to bring out, the facts, and understand the critical needs to receive the vaccine if we have not done so. We have just been told that the vaccine will come in, another set will come in, so for those of us that have not received, let us be prepared to receive it. Thank you.
The Incident Commander, Mr. Babaji Desanwolu, represented by Secretary to the State Government, Mrs. Folasha Dejaji, Mr. Boss Mustafa, Secretary to the Federal Government, Honorable Minister of Health, represented by my friend and colleague, Honorable Minister of State, Dr. Mamora, my friend, Executive Director of National Primary Healthcare Development Agency, Dr. Faisal Shwab, thank you very much and welcome to Lagos. And to the person who just spoke on behalf of my other good friend, Dr. Chikwe Hekowazu, the Director General of NCDC, Dr. Walter Mulambo, WHO, and Dr. Boss Mustafa, who was represented by the, um, by the Honorable Minister of State, Education, welcome to Lagos. Um, to our Father, the Ober of Lagos, His Royal Highness, Riva Baba Tunde Akilu, thank you very much and thank you to see so many White Calf Chiefs accompanying you today. Really, a lot of this messaging, we've relied on you and thank you very much for those strong words, those strong words that you always give us and we, it keeps us on our toes. And while we as government are doing our best, we also rely on the White Calf Chiefs and our Royal Fathers to spread the message to the community about the importance of all the public health interventions and also to help us and encourage us to be receptive to the vaccination that the federal government have so kindly made available to us in Lagos. And I'm proud to say that those vaccines were very effectively and speedily distributed and administered in Lagos and all our vaccines have been used in totality. Thank you very much, Dr. Faisal, for making additional consignments available to us, contrary to what people might think. The demand for vaccines in Lagos is very high and not surprising and that is why we're having this meeting here today, to build on that vaccine acceptance. And while, as you heard Mr. Governor announcing a few days ago, that there is some evidence to suggest that Lagos State is indeed going into a third wave. We're beginning to see increasing activity at our laboratories, many more people are testing positive than in, over the last three months. We've had three months of peace and you may think that we've been resting, but we have not because it is during times of peace that we actually work harder. And we've been anticipating a third wave because we watch the global environment, we watch what's happening on the continent, and it is inevitable that Lagos will see some increase in activity because of the cosmopolitan nature of this megacity. We receive visitors on a daily basis from all over the world and despite our very stringent guidelines and operating procedures at the airport, we still see people coming in who are positive and our attempts to prevent them from infecting members of the community is not always hundred percent. So if we're beginning to see the beginning of a third wave, we're not surprised that the request for vaccines has also increased. I receive, and myself and all members of Cabinet and Mr. Governor, receive daily calls on when the next batch of vaccines are coming. So I'd like to reassure you, ED, that the demand for Lagos, in Lagos for vaccines is high. Nonetheless, we still have to hit those high targets of sixty percent vaccination, hopefully before the end of this year or going into the beginning of next year, if we're going to prevent these waves of new variants coming into Lagos and trying to force us to shut down our economy. It is Mr. Governor's determined resolution that Lagos will not shut down its economy For us to do that, it's not just the government. The government will do everything in its power to reduce the opportunity for viruses to come in and create havoc, but it is also a civic responsibility of everybody and that is why we're here now, that we follow the rules and regulations, that we are each other's brothers and sisters and keepers, and that we maintain the social distancing, we maintain the respiratory and personal hygiene, and that if we are feeling unwell, that you please go and have a COVID test. During a pandemic, if you have a fever, if you have a sore throat or a cough, you are likely to be COVID positive rather than malaria positive or any other positive. And therefore, our testing, we have testing sites all over Lagos. We implore people to go to those sites, they are still free of charge. If you wish to go to a private facility, that is your choice and you're welcome to do that, but we are still, as Lagos State, testing close to two and three thousand people every day and a lot of that is still free of charge. It is important that you know your status and if you are positive, that you follow the guidelines. And on our part, we will continue to make treatment available, we will continue to make adequate amounts of oxygen available for those that need it, and we will do everything in our power, together with the federal government, to make available vaccines so that we can achieve the deadline that has been set by the WHO and other health institutions. I would also like to just quickly, before I take my seat, recognize the presence of my counterpart from Open State, Dr. Tommy Koka, the Honorable Commissioner for Health, and my father in the academia, Professor Oyewale Tomori. Thank you, I just recognized you sitting there now. I'm delighted to see you here. We all know that Dr. Professor Tomori does not mince his words, he tells it to us as it is, he keeps us on our toes, and we're happy that you're here today to share this event. I would also like to just quickly recognize members of the Ministry of Health that are present, the body of Permanent Secretaries, Dr. Mustafa from the National Prime, from the Primary Healthcare Board, and Dr. Shagmo Obueye, the Permanent Secretary of Health, and also one of my other Fathers in Public Health, Professor Akin Oshibogun. Permit me to stand on the one protocol and wish you all a very happy deliberation on this very important occasion. Thank you very much for your attention.
You know, a few years ago, no, actually not a few years ago, in the late nineties, I was here in Lagos for my master's degree, and if I'd paid any attention, then I would have given my speech today in Yoruba. But after listening to the translation from my sister here, I decided not to embarrass myself. Your Excellency, the Executive Governor of Lagos State, able to be represented here by the Secretary to the Government of Lagos State, the Secretary to the Government of the Federation, able to be represented here by my brother, the Honorable Minister of State for Education, my mentor, the Honorable Minister of State for Health, the WHO country representative, Royal Fathers here, especially the KBESE, the Ober of Lagos, and the representative of the ONI, your presence here is really significant to this event. You know, I don't think that we've said enough when it comes to the work that Lagosians have done in terms of how well they've worked to contain the COVID-19 pandemic epidemic in Nigeria. It is because of the incredible work that Lagosians have done that Nigerians are safe today from COVID-19. Can we give the Lagos State team another round of applause? We owe Lagosians a lot. You see, the COVID-19 control effort, the response efforts in Lagos has been very, very successful. When things go bad, people blame government, but when it's excellent, they thank God. But please, today let us thank Lagos States and Lagos State Government. One of the turning points in my career really has been my coming to Lagos State for my master's degree in the nineties, and for this, I am eternally grateful and this is why Lagos State has a special place in my heart. I want to recognize the work of Professor Akin Oshibogun, who taught me in the University of Lagos, and another teacher here, Professor Oyewale Tomori. They've made a significant difference in the lives of many public health experts today and we cannot thank them enough, but can we please give them a round of applause? Your Excellencies, permit me therefore to start by profoundly thanking you for making time out from your very busy schedules to participate in this meeting. I particularly thank the Executive Governor and good people of Lagos State, the center of excellence for hosting this meeting. The reason we're gathered here today is to discuss COVID-19 vaccination, address mutual concerns, reach a consensus, and take more responsibilities in the ongoing efforts to protect ourselves, our families and communities against the pandemic. This town hall is in line with the principles of proactive community engagement, transparency, and accountability of the Presidential Steering Committee under the label able leadership of Barista Boss Mustafa, the Secretary to the Government of the Federation. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is anchored on our conviction that it is not enough to offer vaccines to Nigerians, but that we must also empower the people with the correct information they require to make informed decisions about getting vaccinated against COVID-19. As we are all aware, there's a global outbreak of COVID-19, which was officially declared a pandemic on the eleventh of March, 2020, and the timeline in which its vaccines were developed have been trade by controversy, fueled by large-scale misinformation and disinformation, especially on social media. In fact, the volume and traffic of misinformation and disinformation has rightly been described as an infodemic that has continued to promote risk-taking behaviors in our communities. The world is currently battling a COVID-19 pandemic alongside the infodemic, thus underscoring the need for us to empower ourselves with the right information and take responsibility to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities against COVID-19. Considering to deliberate misinformation about COVID-19 would amount to jeopardizing the health of our people and putting the economy of the country at risk. It is sad that just as an increasing multitude of Nigerians are beginning to realize the need to protect themselves against COVID-19, we are seeing new conspiracy theories aimed at misleading the people. The most recent of this is the magnetic theory, in which mischief makers claim that COVID-19 vaccine creates a magnetic field that causes metal objects to stick to vaccination sites and causes the body to light up like an electric bulb. I am glad that many independent voices have emerged on social and traditional media to counter these false theories. The National Primary Healthcare Development Agency also took steps to scientifically debunked the theory in a media engagement where we practically demonstrated that the magnet theory is fake and misleading. While we continue to work hard, pray and hope that many more Nigerians will understand the reality of COVID-19 and the urgent need to protect ourselves against it, we need to always seek correct and accurate information and verify the ones people are sharing with us from reliable sources so that we may understand when mischievous people are trying to use the media to deceive us. Your Excellencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I am glad to inform you that Nigeria has successfully utilized three million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-five doses of AstraZeneca vaccines across thirty-six states and the FCT, representing ninety-eight percent utilization of the four million and twenty-four thousand doses of Oxford AstraZeneca vaccines we received from the Kovax facility in March, 2021. This comprises about two million five hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and five people who have been vaccinated with their first dose and one million four hundred and four thousand two hundred and five who have received their second dose of the vaccine. This is to say that all vaccines given to Nigeria in the first phase has been exhausted and no vaccine expired. Please give a round of applause to all the frontline health workers. Again, in this wise, I want to particularly recognize the effort and the leadership provided by Professor Akin Abayomi and the Permanent Secretary of the Lagos State Primary Healthcare Board, Dr. Ibrahim Mustafa Akinwu. Please, can we give them a round of applause? The country recorded fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty cases of mild to moderate side effects, with only one hundred and forty-eight cases considered to be severe. However, we did not record any case of death directly associated with the COVID-19 vaccination. Accordingly, the country has officially entered the first phase of its strategic COVID-19 vaccination plan and is now preparing to commence the second phase in the next few weeks. As plans and preparations for the second phase commences, a whole-of-family approach vaccination model will be utilized. This is because we know that Nigeria is plagued by other preventable and treatable diseases. We will use the opportunity and the platform of the COVID-19 vaccination to integrate with other ways of treating common diseases such as malaria, screening for diabetes, for hypertension, so that when people come to the health facility, it is not only to receive COVID-19 vaccine, it is also an opportunity for them to be screened for other diseases, but also an opportunity for them to bring their young ones for routine immunization, so that we're using an opportunity to kill several birds with one stone. We have also received confirmation that we'll be receiving delivery of the following vaccine shipments in the coming months. Three million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand doses of Oxford AstraZeneca by the end of July or early August, 2021, from the Kovax facility. I hope that makes you happy. We're also expecting four million and eighty doses of Moderna COVID-19 vaccine in August from the Kovax facility. This was donated by the United States Government. We're also expecting another three million five hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty doses of the Pfizer-BioNTech COVID-19 vaccines in Q3 from the Kovax facility. Then finally, there's another twenty-nine million eight hundred and fifty thousand doses of the Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccines by the end of, that will be arriving by the end of September from the African Union. In preparation for the arrival of these vaccines, the Presidential Steering Committee, the Federal Ministry of Health, and the National Primary Healthcare Development Agency is putting in place all the necessary logistics for storage, distribution, security, and accountability for the range of vaccines we are expecting. To this end, the federal government of Nigeria has procured sixty units of ultra-coaching equipment and as we speak, about thirty-seven of them have already been deployed to thirty-six states and the FCT in preparation to receive all the COVID-19 vaccines that require ultra-coaching temperatures below forty to eighty-five degrees Celsius. The government will continue to engage widely with stakeholders and partners across the state's local governments and community levels to ensure effective participation and collaboration in planning, decision-making, and implementation of policies and programs to protect Nigerians against COVID-19. The wise words of the KBESE have been taken on board. Today's town hall meeting is a significant milestone towards ensuring that the people of the southwest geopolitical zone are more actively involved in driving the process of COVID-19 vaccination in Nigeria. I therefore encourage everyone to participate and share your views and experiences to enable us collectively reach ways of improving vaccination and indeed the fight against COVID-19. Let me assure everyone here that the federal government has never and will never compromise on the safe health delivery of to all Nigerians. All COVID-19 vaccines satisfied by the World Health Organization for use are safe and can protect you against the disease. It is important to stress that anyone who is eighteen years and above is eligible to take the COVID-19 vaccine. I therefore call on every eligible person to register and ensure that they make themselves available for vaccination on due dates. I also urge everyone, including those who have taken their first and second doses of the vaccine, to continue to wear face masks and observe other public health measures. Finally, this town hall is an open dialogue. I therefore once again invite our people of the southwest and everyone here present today to participate in sharing views and experience lists, frankly and actively as your concerns and recommendations are critical to the success of the COVID-19 response in Nigeria. I thank you most sincerely for your attention, please stay safe. I thank you most sincerely for your attention. Please stay safe.
You know, laughing or whatever, because we were wondering whether she was introducing me or somebody else. Well, thank you very much. Well, on a location like this, where you're forced to observe the protocol, but as characteristic of me, I have two options, whether, well, the two options are Nigerian coinages, as I always say. The first is to say all protocols duly observed. But the problem with that is that if the protocol already establishes faulty. Governor Sowolu, he'd be represented by my dear sister, this is Jaji, and proceed therefrom to also recognize, it's difficult for me to pick the order, but I will also, I will also recognize the, my good friend, the Red Cap Chief from the east of Niger, who is my good friend and representing, of course, my colleague in the Federal Executive Council and representing the secretary of the government of the Federation, where you're calling Honorable Wajiba, I just called him Emeka. Emeka, thank you very much for being part of this. Thank you very much for being here. Lagos welcomes you. Maybe I should start from that other end. Permit me to recognize, I believe that the commissioners of health from the various states in the southwest, they are also representing the respective governors as well. So I want to recognize and I thank all the commissioners of health from southwest who are here. The one I can see easily is, well, again, you call her Dr. Koka. I just call her Tumi. Dr. Tumi Koka, thank you very much from Ogun. And of course, other colleagues from southwest states who are here, you're recognized. Prof, you have been duly recognized. Thank you very much. But the weather situation, I understand made it impossible for him to southwest zonal town hall meeting on COVID-19 vaccination in Nigeria. I am particularly delighted to be home today in Lagos, albeit with disturbing concern about the pandemic we are gathered here to discuss, that is COVID-19. Ever since Nigeria recorded its index case in February, twenty twenty, the government and the people have been working very hard trying to contain the COVID virus. The disease and government's containment response and the vaccine solution coming from scientists have all been received without uncontroversies fueled by deliberate misinformation, disinformation, outright falsehood and myths that have continued to spread particularly through the social media. These myths vary from weird to the bizarre. Well, Dr. Fraser had already mentioned some of these bizarre things that people circulate on the social media. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, if COVID-19 virus were to have spread the way its misinformation spread all over the world through the social media, the greater multitude of people would have been dead by now and no one would have needed an order to persuade or convince anyone to keep to non-pharmaceutical interventions and go out to get vaccinated. This is how powerful information can be and this is why we need to understand the gravity of the risks of not educating our people about COVID-19 so that they can see the benefits of getting vaccinated against the disease. The Holy Book says, "Ye shall know the truth and the truth shall set you free." The federal government of Nigeria under the dynamic leadership of President Muhammadu Buhari understood the importance and urgency of containing COVID-19 virus in the country and proactively set up the presidential task force that has now metamorphosed to Presidential Steering Committee on COVID-19 and rightfully handed its leadership to Mr. Boss Mustafa, Secretary to the Government of the Federation, who has done very well on the assignment. I remember that in one of our meetings, because of the understanding within a short time that he has shown on the issues of health, particularly COVID-19, I had to move a motion that we confound him master of public health.